Please for a moment of silence. And let's remember Councilwoman Betty Rodriguez's husband's uncle, Antonio Diaz, who passed away. Also, school board director John D'Angelo, his wife Regina, passed away after a long battle with cancer. And also today, it's not been a good day. Former councilman Carl DiMaggio's wife, Kim, passed away after a long battle with cancer. So let's remember all three of them in our prayers. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we roll call, please?
Mrs. Colvin?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Devine?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
President.
Mr. Fratini?
President.
Mr. Rattino?
Here.
Mr. Dizziati?
Here.
Mr. Paza?
On vacation.
Mrs. Rodriguez?
She's out due to this, her husband's funeral. Okay, before we get started, we have several people that are going to speak tonight. I know our fire chief's in a hurry. He's got another meeting to do. So Herbie, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. I just, basically, two things. One, we've received the 300 smoke alarms that we were going to purchase with the grant money and some of the borough money. And the other thing I just want to mention was during the month of July, we had two lightning strikes in Bristol Borough. One was a lightning strike on Seabird Drive, which caused a serious fire in the roof area of one of the units. And the second lightning strike was on Logan Street, where it struck a chimney and some of the bricks from the chimney came down, broke some windows on one side of the house and on the adjacent neighbors. One of the bricks struck the gas meter and damaged it. And that's the only thing I have.
Any questions for the fire chief? Tony?
Yeah, the first question is, did we decide how we're going to allocate that money for, do we have any more meetings?
We have not had any more meetings.
Okay, so we're still status quo? And then the second question I have is, were you aware that one of your, I guess, fire, fire station, I'm going to say employees, but was not a registered nurse, but walked around like she wasn't a registered nurse? Were you aware of that?
Tony, I'm going to call recess, Matt. Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Sorry for the... At this time, we have the new CEO of Lower Bucks Hospital here, Mike Mott, who would like to introduce himself to borough residents. Right at that podium, Mike?
Thank you, President of the Council, Council, and Mayor. So, I'm Mike Mott, I'm the CEO of the hospital. I've been from St., actually, originally from California, the last decade from St. Louis. Glad to be here, visited the community, gorgeous community, Radcliffe, Mill Street. And the hospital, of course, is about 1.3 miles from here. We're here to serve the community. Anything we can do, if you happen to get a chance, some of you do know me already, stop in. You can get here for a month, but would love to visit, have plenty of time for it, and the hospital does too. So, I know we have a problem with Aetna right now. We expect to have that fixed by November, so if you do have Aetna, we had to cancel that contract, we renegotiated, and I expect it to be done by November. Other than that, we added the community center and really hope that's going to take care of our community. Any ideas? I'm new to the community, love the Bristol area. Your Warferry is beautiful. I was able to catch the Beatles tunes back on a Sunday night. And then, not lately, not too long ago, my wife is an avid Pokemon player. So apparently, you guys are one of the best places for Pokemon. So if you see me, you'll see me going around, probably in a suit, while my wife is doing this. But again, stop in at Lower Bucks. I'm Mike, and come visit me. So, thank you.
Mike, I really appreciate you stopping in and introducing yourself to not only the people here, but everybody at home, and for all you're hoping to do at Lower Bucks Hospital. It's something that we need in this town, so hopefully you can keep it going.
Absolutely, and many of our employees live here. In fact, there is one that works for us, that's a daughter of somebody up here, so, and I won't mention any names, but you can guess. So, yes, sir?
Yeah, I read your article in The Courier. Very good, very impressive. And you were talking about bringing the local practitioners back into our community. I really miss Dr. Rattini. Any chance of him coming back?
Well, let me tell you, I've had conversations. Have to be a little careful on, you know, he does work for somebody currently, right now, but we would love to do that. He is under contract right now, but when that contract comes prior to expiration, we'll be at his door knocking, so...
So you are going to bring them back?
Yes, well, if anybody knows Dr. Rattini's, they're so, husband and wife, and we would like to have them both. So, that was actually a major loss. One of the things, if you know Lower Bucks Hospital, we were losing money, so they cut a lot of the doctors. That really hurt the hospital in business. And quite honestly, in retrospect, the primary docs, they probably should have kept. And that was a mistake.
Yeah, as they have Pickard Stadium, Tampa. Okay, thank you, very good, Doug, but very good, or...
Thanks, I'll blame that one on the prior minutes right there.
And Mike, as I told you, as I told you prior, Mike, as I told you prior to meeting you here tonight, whatever you need to Borough will be available for you.
Well, thanks. It's a great time when you're walking down, what is it, First Friday?
First Friday.
Last Friday. First Friday, and Tommy Thompson's right in the middle of walking down the street. So, you obviously have a lot of important people here who would like to participate.
Thanks for coming in.
I'm going to watch the ladies go at some...
Mike, before you leave, because I had it in my notes here, I didn't know you were going to be here, about the ribbon cutting for the community...
Mike, go at a podium, please.
Oh, sure, yes.
So everybody can hear you at home.
Can you, can you just briefly tell them, tell the public what the Community Health Center is?
Sure.
Some of the benefits to the community?
It's managed by a primary health, primary doctor, so if you don't have a primary, great place to go. Or if your primaries, you know, the businesses closed, it's after, let's say, four o'clock or five o'clock in the afternoon, you can go there, it's for a very low cost. It's as low as, if you're a current customer, current patient, then that's $38. Your first actual time there, because they have to work you up, will be $85, but after that's $38, if you're a cash pay. Obviously, we take your insurance. So, for example, the whole Aetna situation, you can pay the cash if that's an issue. Otherwise, you know, we take all the other insurances.
Thank you.
Again, of course, we have a great board member, so we have local representation. Lou, you are on the board, so, just for clarification purposes.
Thank you.
Guy there.
Yeah, he is. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Jen and Amber here. If you want to bring your whole group up, or... Director of Advocate of the Outreach Program.
Hi, I'm Jen Hines. Thank you so much for having us tonight. And so I wanted to come and talk to you all about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So each year in October, we commemorate Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and so all around the globe, agencies and advocates aim to raise awareness on this issue. And so we are the only domestic violence agency in all of Bucks County, providing support and service to victims of domestic violence, and also raising awareness and doing education and training out in the community. And we've been so grateful to be able to put on our Paint the Towns Purple event in the past couple of years. You've seen the ribbons tied up around Mill Street, and then we also do this in other boroughs across Bucks County as well. And we're very fortunate that this is one of our biggest awareness events. This reaches the most people. When people hear our name, they think, oh, the purple ribbons that are tied up. And this is a way for us to show the community that we're here, we're here for you, we're here to provide service. And most excitingly for us, we are back in Bristol. We just recently opened our office on Wood Street. And so this is a way for us to let the residents know, we're here, we're physically here. You don't have to get up to Royalstown if you need help from us. And so we would be extremely grateful to be able to put this event on again this year. Our staff and volunteers will tie up the ribbons on September 28th, from about 10 to 12, about two hours. We'll do trees and lamps just on Mill Street from Route 13 to Radcliffe, and on Pond from Mulberry to Mill. And then they'll stay up through the month of October for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and then our staff and volunteers will take them down on November 2nd. And then another thing that we want to invite the whole community and the Council too, is our candlelight vigil. And this is when we honor those who we've lost to domestic violence, provide a voice to those who are voiceless, and advocate for social change. So we're hosting this at the Bristol Riverside Theater this year. The date is to be determined, but you can see it on our social media, website, and all of that, so we wanted to extend that invitation as well. And then I wanted to introduce Amber, who's leading our new anti-human trafficking program out of our Bristol office, to tell you a little bit about that.
Yep, so our human trafficking program is still in the planning phase. I've been here for about a month now, and really excited to help get it started. Even though we're in the planning phase, we've already begun serving survivors of human trafficking and helping provide them with resources and help that they need. We've also started to develop intake procedures and policies for survivors coming in, and training staff internally on human trafficking. Along with internal trainings, we're reaching out to the community agencies, organizations, and other institutions in order to collaborate together in hopes to end this trafficking rights abuse and provide trainings on the issue throughout the community. We're also working with our grant collaborators to further develop our common efforts towards the prevention of human trafficking in Bucks County. And we just want to let you know, we're here as a resource for all survivors of human trafficking and/or domestic violence.
I think in the past, whatever we needed to do to help you, we cooperated with you, so I'm sure nobody on Council has any issues with you putting up the ribbons or whatever you need to do in town.
Thank you so much.
So, have any questions, Lorraine?
I've been told that human trafficking is really prevalent in this area. Is that true?
Yeah, I believe so. I recently was moved from Colorado about a month ago, so still getting, like, learning about it and everything, but yeah, it's definitely prevalent, so that's why I believe a woman's place thought it was a good opportunity to bring in this program.
Do you have, like, advice for parents, like, to tell their kids different things to keep them, like, it's probably from social media that a lot of it is happening, I think. Is there anything you'd like to tell parents out there?
Yeah, you know, I think one of my ideas at least was to maybe try to get, like, some trainings for, like, staff at schools, so maybe they can start to recognize signs of certain things maybe going on, like lots of at-risk youth or homelessness, that sort of thing.
They also say that you should be aware of your, like, you should have your children's codes, like, for their phones and for Facebook, and you should go on, off, and check it. So, and I don't know how to do that, like, that would be a good thing to teach people, how to do, you know, parents?
Yeah, in privacy settings and security settings.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Mr. Devine?
Yeah, along the same lines, I have two teenage girls that are in school. And I'm also a teacher in the chamin, and I just feel that a lot of the assemblies that the administration gives to the kids is so Pollyanna and just super, like, on the surface, and it doesn't hit anything. Like, to me, like, this is such a, this is such a big deal now with social media and all the craziness that's going on, and these kids are on there all the time, you know what I mean? So, I just think that an assembly like this where you can hit it for real, like, get, you know, with the school board and having, where it reaches, you know, from, I don't even know what grade it would be, maybe fifth. And I think a lot of times, with these types of, you know, kind of very delicate, but, the word is just crazy that these things are happening, is that they start too late, you know, with drugs and these types of things. They start, it's like, they start way too late. By the time they're getting, if it's the 10th, 11th grade, they're already started, and I think they know everything, you know what I mean? So, I just think that having that would be another great resource to get the community, so...
Yeah, definitely.
And then I would have, you know, I'm sure there's a bunch of kids there that would be interested volunteer-wise, if you guys need stuff like that.
Yeah, we are definitely looking at our, you know, Lower Bucks and Bristol volunteer base, our volunteer manager is here with us as well, and so, you know, that's always a possibility too, for any, you know, our volunteers do direct service, they hold support groups, they answer a hotline, they sort donations, they do the teaching in the schools, they honestly do everything.
Now, do you guys have a sheet with your information on it, with you, or?
With me. I can bring you some.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so whatever you need, you know, we're here to help and support you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in. We have Frank Dillon here from Begley, Harlem, Mandio, to talk about the St. Anne's School Project. So Frank, turn it up here.
Good evening, everyone. Frank Dillon with me tonight, I have Vlad Brodsky, the principal of the project, Jody Littis, the engineer, and Peter Gillis, the architect, to answer any questions you might have. So everyone's familiar with the project, it's references 418, 430 Jefferson, that we all call it St. Anne's. It's been before, the project's been before the zoning hearing board several times, been before the planning commission, with a different use. We've, originally, there's a proposed different use, there was proposed more units. We've met with your engineers, we've met with your, you know, the people in the borough. So originally, we started with 21 units, now we're proposing 16 units, 12 in the school, four in the convent, four separate units. The gymnasium's being removed, where parking's going to be installed in green areas, which I know everyone had an interest in. The facade's going to be renovated, there's going to be 43 parking spaces, where no vehicle access from Logan Street. The units are going to be managed by a condo association. The proposed units are not apartment units, will be owner-occupied and shall not be offered for or rented. That was one of the conditions of the zoning hearing board decision, I know was a concern of the Borough. We received a review letter from the engineer. We're asking for certain waivers, that's items 1 through 10 on the waiver list. Items 11 and 12 are will comply. The SADO, sex, the zoning is all will comply. There's four items there. The subdivision of land development review section, we're asking for a waiver for item number one, and that's just noting things on the plan and, you know, too much detail. Everything else is will comply. Number five talks about ADA standards. We've mentioned to the engineer, there are certain parking spots, as a result of discussions, we're going to move closer to the entrance to the school building, because the first floor of that is going to be ADA, available and compliant. The other units, of course, aren't the townhouses or the second, third floor. And the rest of the review letters, all will comply. So, we're here to answer any questions you might have regarding the project.
Let me just give you an overview, and I think Frank touched on a lot of things. When this project first came up, they came in front of the zoning board, and myself and Mr. Crotrochi attended the zoning board meeting and spoke against the project. I think the first one was some kind of a school, that, who was it, Frank, do you remember?
It was a school and a day program for intellectually disabled people.
Right, for disabled people. And they were going to live in the convent, and we didn't think it was a good fit, so the zoning board, we spoke against it, although they make a decision, they... So the zoning board, we spoke against it, although they make a decision, they turned it down. Then they came back in again, months later, and they proposed to put eight units in the convent and 16 units in the school. And again, me and Mr. Catroci spoke out against it at the zoning board meeting saying that we thought it was too many units and it was, there was not enough parking. So then they went back to the drawing board again, we met with them again, and the plan that they have, they're going to do eight units, four units in the convent instead of eight. They're going to look residential with porches and a roof out front, we're going to dress them up. The school, they agreed to take the gymnasium down and like Frank said, and put green, green space in with parking. And the last zoning meeting, we spoke in favor of the project. So as councilman of the South Ward, I think we're both happy with the project. And I think it's going to be a plus. The people there from Logan Street showed up, they agreed there'd be no traffic going out on the Logan. People from Jefferson Avenue was there, we spoke to them. So I think that we came to an agreement on this project as far as me and Mr. Catroci, as far as council and everybody else, whatever questions you have, they're here tonight. And since we're not meeting Monday again, they also agreed to wait until September for final approval, which I appreciate their, you know, consideration on that because they could have asked us to meet Monday just to vote on this. All the waivers and everything they're asking for is in the packets or no? Will they be in the packets for council?
No, they're in the packet. The waivers are outlined in Gilmore's letter of July 11th. And since then, the applicant's engineer has indicated they'll comply. The two waivers that Gilmore did not agree with, they agreed to comply. So they're not, and most of the waivers have to do with existing, like it says that the right of way Logan needs to be 50 feet. Well, it's not 50 feet, there's nothing we can do about it. We can't make it wider than it is. It is what it is. But knowing how narrow Logan Street is and parking, one of the conditions was you can't go in or go out or come in on Logan. So everything's going to be through the front. The other concern was the fire apparatus. And Herbie actually brought his ladder truck there, actually did the turns and was satisfied that if there's a problem in the big building, he's going to be able to get access to it. So all the concerns, the real concerns that we had, I think have been met and Gilmore has recommended that we approve this.
Okay, so anybody have any questions for Lorraine?
The gymnasium is going to be taken down for parking, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that, how many parking spots would that give you?
10 additional, 43 total.
40.
40. 4-0, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else, Tony?
I don't really have any questions. I'm just looking forward to when the, when the building does go up. I mean, I'm excited that it wasn't something that was knocked down. I grew up on Elm Street across the street, so we, I spent a lot of time over at St. Anne's. So I'm happy that you guys were kind of redeveloping and keeping it in the neighborhood, so.
I coached in there, my kids played there, so.
Did you, what year, when you coached?
Oh God, my daughter's 35 now, so.
My husband coached there for girls and boys.
I did the.
Any other questions, Mr. Catroci?
I'd just like to add that Mr. Brodsky's been very cooperative. I mean, when we suggested about taking down the gymnasium, I thought he's going to choke us. And he said, "Well, that works." And he made it work and that, to me, that makes the whole project, not just that we have the additional parking, but it softens the whole look of that building, it's going to look, you know, he's done all the efforts to make it a good project for us and I thank him for that.
You're one of the developers that really did a great job for the town. You considered the borough, you didn't just consider, you know, the end result, so we appreciate that. So you guys, I guess Frank, you and our solicitor will work out these waivers and we'll have it on our agenda for September's meeting?
Yeah, I'm sure Bill will prepare a resolution for us to review and it's straightforward at this point. I don't foresee any problems.
Okay, Kurt, do you have anything you want to add to this?
Yeah.
You're happy with the project? All right, so thanks for coming in and hopefully we get this project moving.
Great, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, councilman.
Okay, am I missing anybody else here tonight?
Joe.
Oh, Joe, you have, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also tonight with us, we have Crystal Boos and Barbara DiMaggio from the Bucks County Tour of Honor, looking for vets for their October 7th trip. I'm sure you've all seen on TV over the last couple of years where the World War II vets, Korean vets and Vietnam vets at different times are taken down to Washington DC on a bus and given a tour of Washington. October 7th this year is the date for their trip and they're looking for veterans from World War II and Korean vets to sign up for the trip. Matt Marky, our IT guy, has agreed to put on our website, matt.marky@outlook.com for more information. And also too, you can go to the all one word buckscountytourofhonor@gmail.com. And we have a short video that they'd like to show.
I think what Joe is saying is at the end of this council meeting, if council doesn't have a problem with it, Matt is going to show this video for anybody that, you know, vets, because it's not only for Bristol, it's anybody could attend this tour of honor in Washington. So I appreciate all your hard work and effort and I don't think anybody sitting here is going to have a problem with us showing the video. So thank you for coming in and hopefully some, we get some people signing up for, for your tour.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to open up public participation. So anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium, say your name and address.
Last month, Ralph, you mentioned about moving the basketball courts. In discussions, wouldn't it be, how should I put it? Wouldn't now be a good time, if you're going to do that, to just go ahead and do it right? Like you always say, and I agree, if you're going to do it, do it right. Why not just make a whole new recreation center?
Center?
Yeah.
Where do you want to do it?
I don't know. Where can we do it?
Well, I talked to Mr. Chicoletti and he's in favor of, and I think he approached the fire companies, if they want to build a new firehouse on your property at the school. He said that the school board would be interested in.
Buckley Street and.
Yeah. So that was an option that's on the table that I think the mayor and the fire companies are discussing.
Okay.
The other option is if that doesn't happen, again, maybe we should sit down and talk about redeveloping that corner into something really special for kids. So that's why I said, if we're going to redo them, there's not enough room where they are now to, we could re-blacktop and that's one, but I'm talking about doing something really nice.
Well, and I.
Lights, putting lights up and everything.
And like you said, and I agree, if we're going to do it, let's do it right. But also, I would like to see them enclosed or moved somewhere and put a building over them.
Enclosed?
Enclose them.
Yeah.
That way, I mean, that way, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, that way you could put batting cages in there with pitching machines and things like that, maybe some ping pong tables, like just do it, you know?
I mean, look.
And then, you know, and I think we, I think the community needs a pool. I think we should just go all out and do it. And it would be nice in all, to keep it all in one area, but ground wise, space wise, I don't know if that's possible. But I mean, I think the town deserves something. It's, something's missing here that, community wise, I think.
No question. And I think if you could talk to the school board and they're willing to come up with, maybe we could go 50-50 on this project, I have no problem sitting down with a few members and see what we could do.
Well, I mean, you guys are good at getting money, so I think, you know, mostly your ground, we can't really do anything as far as digging up on, on, I mean Buckley Street because you know that ground is.
You could put a slab there, there's no question.
Oh, basketball courts, some kind of a, with a foundation and then building over top. I remember Mr. Catroci, I'm sorry, Mr. Catroci didn't think that was a good spot for anything up there, he thought it was a gateway. And I understand that and I'm not, that, it's a big piece of ground, absolutely. But I was thinking more like maybe just do something in the skating rink. Maybe it's time to, to do something.
Well, like I said, I mean, there's still a mortgage on the building.
Five, is it five years?
2025, it's paid off.
It's 600, 650,000?
Yep, 660 a year, I think.
So, I mean, look, you guys are good at getting money, you've got money for this building, you know, money for docks.
There's grants out there that are specific for certain things, like the grant for the dock was a fishing game grant.
I understand.
That usually comes out of Pitts, a lot of people in Pittsboro get that money. So we were able to apply for it and we were successful because nobody really around here could apply for it.
Right.
And then grants, there's infrastructure grants and things like that, there's not a lot of money just for recreation. And you know, we've been talking, just trying to get $100,000 to blacktop the courts.
I understand.
Or more. So as far as doing a project, again, sitting down with the school board, coming up with a plan, let's get a master, like we're doing for the riverfront. That may not ever happen. I don't, you know, to get that kind of money, it's probably never going to be out there. But we have a plan if something came up. So to sit down and share expenses on designing a master plan, picking a location, I have no problem with it, but as long as the school wants to come in on this.
Well, money wise, that's really not, I don't think we can.
Well, we can't either. I mean, the.
Well, no, I don't think the school district can just go ahead and say, here, here's half the money for, unless it's school related or whatever. We'll have to check, maybe Bill even knows legally what we can do, but I don't think, you know, that's not something that we can do. I don't, I could be wrong and I can't speak for the whole board either.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we don't have the money to go build a building, put a pool in, you know, everything you're saying is great.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're talking millions of, they're spending what, Kurt, out of township, 11 million?
Well, I mean, they, and they have, I'm sorry Kurt, but you know, I'm not expecting anything like that, but I mean, you put one Olympic sized pool somewhere, you know, that could handle a lot of people or two small ones, one in, you know, one part of town, wherever the space is available. But maybe just do a way, melt the ice in one of them buildings and, you know, and I'm not, look, I'm not against hockey, I'm not against anything like that. But that's something, a pool, membership wise, could bring some money in, batting cages could bring, pitching machines, that stuff, the basketball courts, no charge naturally, maybe some ping pong tables, you know, stuff like that, stuff that doesn't cost a lot, but something for everybody in town. Parents that want to take their kids over, grandparents want to walk their kid over, you know, something like that. And I know parking's going to be an issue, no matter where, but parking's an issue every time we have something.
Everywhere.
Anywhere, so.
There's, there's got to be a plan put together and a way to pay for it because you can't put it just on the taxpayers.
Right, and I would never, and I don't want to see taxes go up, but if you could, not you, but if council or Mr. Dillon with Kurt can try to go after some grant money, you know, maybe some, in five years.
We're constantly looking for money.
In five years, I'm sorry.
We're constantly looking for money for recreation.
Well, would it be considered recreation or would it be something community development or, you know, if you change the name a little bit? You know what I mean?
We're trying.
Come on, you're, you've been at this a long time, longer than I have.
And I got a lot of money in this town.
There you go. So, and you know what, a pool and things like that, it just, for the community.
Next month, you guys don't meet at all this month, right?
15.
You do meet in August?
Yes.
All right, so when you go to your meeting, talk to the board and see if they're interested in sitting down with, you know, talk to your solicitor and find out if there's a way we could develop, commit to, I don't know, $20,000, 25,000, to do a master plan of somewhere.
Okay.
And then we'll take it from there.
I'll bring it up. Like I said, I'm off, I mean.
Got to have.
If we can legally, if we can do that, I don't see, and I won't speak for the whole board, but sure.
The way to get money isn't why we've been so successful is you got to have a plan first. If there's a grant that comes up tomorrow, you got to be ready to go with a plan.
Right.
So when we develop these plans and then we, Kurt will call or somebody will call and say, somebody politically will say, "Look, this grant's coming out for a million dollars."
Mm-hmm.
You know, we have, we have a plan ready to go. So when we submit, we're already like at the finish line, we're not waiting, okay, let's go design something.
Right.
So that's why master plans help.
I think here in town now, I think the biggest issue would be space, ground wise, to do some, if you wanted to try, or like I said, it would be nice to keep everything in one area, whether it's.
Hey, you got, you got Chestnut and Elm Street, maybe you could build something.
Very possible.
You know.
And, and you know, whatever's going to happen, if it does, it probably won't be for quite a few years, you know.
If there's a plan in place.
The rink will be just about, pay down some, I'm sure you got plans for some of that money too, but you know, it's just, there's something missing here.
Well, once the rink's paid off, the taxpayers get their, that money goes back because it's debt service.
Okay.
You can't take that, you can't keep collecting that money, it goes back to the taxpayers. So their taxes will get lowered once that rink's paid off.
Right. And I think if they realize that we want to do, we want to do something for the whole community, the whole town. And I'm not saying anything else that goes on in town is not for the town, but it just, I just can't stand going out of town to do different things, you know, whether it's a pool.
But if the school, if the school's going to use it and the borough's going to use it and you have a plan, maybe there could be a referendum, you put it out to the voters, taxes are going to go up 10 mils.
Maybe not.
For this project.
Maybe not, maybe we won't have to raise it.
But I'm saying.
You guys are going to come up with the money.
Then you say it's up to the taxpayers. Do you really want it or don't you want it?
Right, that's, that's right. And like I said, you, you guys put it on the table to talk about it council wise, your ideas or whatever, have a town hall. And if the people say no, they say no.
Right.
But I, I think a lot more people would want to use a pool or wood rather than skating rink and, and again, I'm not knocking it, you know, Little League is, Little League is done probably pretty much end of June, you know, with the kids, if there's not any All-Stars, there's really nothing going on up there. So I don't know where they're all hiding, but they're not out on the streets.
Gabrielle.
Gabrielle.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Louie. Louie?
The one thing I would like to.
Jeff, you want to stay there?
One thing I would like to mention is that area on Buckley Street, the old canal right, and there's some serious talk about, you know, getting this canal opened up again.
Right, supposed to go through there.
So I would be very, I myself would be very cautious about deciding to develop anything on that, on that area, if we're going to end up giving up a chance to get some real money to, to put water back in that canal through, you know, behind.
Yeah, there was.
And I don't think that's our decision, I think that's the canal's decision.
Yeah, and there's, there's been talk about that for, you know, off and on for years, we understand. That's what I'm saying, maybe Otto, I mean, even Otto Street or Elm and Chestnut around, where the basketball courts are now, maybe move the garden club thing or, you know, and again, not that I, I don't want to see a garden club, but you know, I think, I just think the town is really missing something for the whole community.
What you're talking about, you need a lot of space. And we're in, we're in contact through the mayor with a major piece of ground right now that, off of Roman House.
Oh, great.
So we're, if Joe can, he's working hard to try to get this done, we're talking acres that we may be able to get, so.
You know.
Now that's something that, you talk about the community center.
Uh-huh, great, okay.
Tony?
Yeah, I mean, just to add on to what you're saying, Jeff, is that, to me, like this is something I visualize all the time, like to me, all the great stuff that we have is Mill Street and Radcliffe, just that corner, there's so much great stuff that's going on, that people don't have access to the rest of the town. Like to me, where that basketball courts and those gardens are right now is the perfect place to have a central park there, right? And once you get rid of Elm Street, that's, should be, I mean, that should be coming down soon.
No.
To open up that space and like to me, those are outdoor facilities, I'm not sure about, like we were talking about enclosing it with a roof, but just the rink itself, we pay as tax, we're paying $660,000 a year regardless of anybody who walks in there.
Right. Right.
So, like, to me, I'm not a hockey guy, I don't care, I'm not a, I'm not a hockey person or a skate person, and the thing that's frustrating is that even the kids that use it on a rack, they're our kids.
Right.
They still gotta pay twelve, thirteen dollars just to go use it.
Absolutely.
You know what I mean, like, to me, I just see that, just that one rink, if we could just use that rink and turn that into, you know, you put an out, a, a track around the outside, just so older people don't have to go to the mall, they don't have to go outside, they can walk there, and then you have things for kids to do, because right now, we were talking about where those kids at right now.
Absolutely.
They got, this is what they're doing, they're hanging out in pot lots that they shouldn't be, because they're too old for it. So, then they're hanging out, out front of Gabrielle's, I'm sure some other businesses that they're just, there's nothing for them, we did the same thing.
Right.
They're riding their bikes in, in the street.
In Mill Street.
These are all things that we all did, but there's nothing for them to do. There's really nothing for them to do.
And, you know, like you said, hockey's not for everybody, softball, baseball's not for everybody, but a pool, you know, something like that, ping-pong tables in, you know, in some, and you don't have to, maybe not even enclose the basketball courts. Remember the original skating rink, it just had a roof?
Yeah.
You know, and it was still open all around the sides, but I thought of Jefferson Avenue, going back, you're laughing, going back a lot of years, right? But, uh, I saw the Jefferson Avenue because it's out in the open, you know what I mean, it's a, it's in a, it's in a neighborhood where.
You got the canal there.
It's busy, so everybody rides by there, we have an excellent police department led by Chief Henry, I mean, you know, that would help them.
I think things great, it's a competitive one.
I, I hear you, you know, I don't, I know you guys have plans, you know, you're thinking way ahead down the road, but I, I, you know, I sit around the house, I'm in retirement, me and the pup, we watch TV, I go out, I ride around, do projects, and where's everybody at? I mean, it's just, it's, I mean, it's hot.
Video games.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lorraine.
Lorraine.
How about on, um, remember where the basketball courts were before?
Is that Grundy property?
Grundy.
There's restrictions on, but again, we all could come up with a location, you gotta find money. It doesn't matter what you do, there's got, you need, you need money, so, all right, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jay Wayne and Dave, I'm sorry.
One more thing, I, I got a couple of phone calls about the open basketball court on Buckley Street from some residents. I says, oh, what's your problem with it, and they, they said, well, it's a residential area, we don't want the noise.
You're talking about up on where they, where they call?
On, on Buckley Street, they didn't want an open court on Buckley Street, because it's a residential area, and they were wondering, why don't we just leave it where it is, because that's an industrial area, it's kind of isolated, so I just wanted to put that in there. I did have some concerns from Buckley Street residents.
I hear you, okay.
Yeah, and just, I mean, with, with Dave saying, you know, talk to the residents along Buckley, is that, there's two things that are happening, right? So, now, if we move the spots from where it is right now, which is perfectly placed, in the center of town, and we address that, if we go to the, you know, to the, to the property on Buckley, now we're, we're dealing with whatever's in that ground. The second is always going to be a parking issue.
Right.
And now, we have to worry about people crossing the street, run, you know what I mean, how they're driving, we don't have to worry about that where we're at now, so.
I hear it, I hear it.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay, anybody else on this side of the room, go to the podium and state your name?
Let her first, she has questions.
So, real quick, I kind of wanted to piggyback off of.
Your name and all.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nicole Poliakow. Um, real quick, I just kind of wanted to piggyback off of what my father and Tony Devine and a few other people were mentioning. Um, I actually was talking to like a few people about like, you know, possibly having a recreation center with like a public pool, just for like everybody in the community of all ages to enjoy. I would love to move forward with the project and look for grants and stuff like that, if you're willing to have like a sit-down, say within like a month to come up with a proposal.
A proposal to?
As far as like funding for the money, location, and all of your like that.
I mean, you're talking, there's no way to raise that kind of money?
No, I know, but just to have like a general idea.
Well, I, I said to your dad, I mean, I'm willing to sit down with him and some members of the school board and see if we could put a master plan together.
Okay.
And then, once you put a plan together, the engineers can give you a cost estimate.
Okay.
Whether it was done in five years, if it's a million-dollar project, is it five, and then from that plan, you start saying, well, we can't afford this, but maybe we could do this now, and then in years, we could put this in. So, there's a whole plan on how to approach it.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, want to continue the discussion at any time, I mean, I'm always available.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything?
Hello, I'm Gianni Catroci, uh, from Rackliff Street, and, uh, I was recently noticed, uh, that with all the rebranding we've been doing in our town and promoting ourselves, uh, one thing I've noticed is that the town does in fact have a flag. I've noticed that we do have one here, but it's not promoted throughout the rest of town, no one really knows it, no one flies it from their porch. I think that's probably the only version of the town flag we have, and it's in reality just the seal on a background. So, uh, today I came with the proposal to form a committee, uh, independent of council, but with potential volunteers from council, to, uh, examine the current situation and organize, uh, contests throughout the town for, uh, a redesign of the town flag that we can all fly and, uh, fly outside the council building and decorate, uh, along Mill Street and other major buildings in the, uh, borough. So, I came with the proposal to form the, uh, a committee that would, uh, organize a competition to redesign the, uh, town flag.
Nice, nice idea.
Yeah. So, why don't you work along, I'll work along with you, and if you need some help from council or the borough manager, and form some kind of committee, and we'll, I mean, if council has no problem, I think that the flag we have here don't even have a date on it, so it's basically the borough's seal.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a great idea, and like you said, the town's been doing so much in rebranding, so, I'm, I'm very happy that you want to take a project on like this.
Thank you.
Any council have any questions? All right, so let's move forward, and let's see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on this side of the room?
Hi, everybody, I'm Michael Vorman, Mill Street. Uh, before I get into a couple announcements, um, I think that's an awesome idea. Um, just, uh, Mr. Mayor Joe Saxton, when we were at the cutting for the hospital, uh, happened to see another municipality there, and they had these great shirts on, and they had their coat, you know, whatever the proper name is, their seal, their borough seal, and we had talked about it, and Mr., you know, Mayor Saxton has it on. So, I think that's a wonderful idea, again, especially with the branding, you know, there's so many things and so many taglines that we have, but I think that's great, and any way that raising the bar could help you to do anything, we'd be involved as well. I think it's a great idea, thank you for bringing that up.
I would definitely support working alongside Raising the Bar.
Great, great, just wanted to say that, though, that's wonderful. Um, so, thank you, um, just a couple things, the River Runner, I don't know if anyone noticed, it wasn't out this weekend. We're having maintenance done to it, we're hoping that it'll be up and running by Thursday, but not promised. Uh, if anyone needs to get any update on that, suggest that you just, uh, look at the Raising the Bar Facebook page, but again, it is having some, uh, maintenance done to it. Um, the other thing is that weeds, we all know that the weeds in town are invading us, uh, just because of the, the crazy climate. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to, um, uh, the, um, the BVBA got together with Raising the Bar, and we went ahead and, uh, treated the weeds, because it was, we felt that with First Friday coming, that it really needed to be treated. And what I'd like to just be able to say tonight, that if you could just spread the word, just like the weed spread, we could spread the word, because it really makes a difference, and if we could just put the word out, and just if the business owners and even the residents could just go out and keep in mind that these weeds, you know, are, are crazy. Um, I know we're all hearing the, the, the lawsuits with Roundup, but, uh, we've found a concoction that really works, and it's homemade. It consists of, um, two gallons of water, and then there's a mixture of vinegar and also salt. We were first told, uh, told Epsom salt, but regular salt works just as well, and a teaspoon of Dawn. So, if you need that, you could reach out to Raising the Bar, um, just referring that just because of the website, and we could gladly pass that on, and it really works, we did it, the one day and the next day, they were out. Now, we have to go back and clean some of it up, but at least they're down.
Does it work on poison ivy?
I don't know that, I don't know that.
All right, let's try, we're trying to stick to.
Yes, the next thing, just real quick, um, so just spread the word also with, um, historic Bristol Borough, keeping it beautiful. We'll just spread the word to the business owners and the home, and the residents, you know, organize, clean up, um, put the word out, and everyone's doing it. So, I just think it's so important, because we have so much traffic coming to the, the docks and Mill Street and Rackliff Street and the surrounding areas, and I just think it's really important that we keep that beautiful image up. Um, lastly, um, the farmer's market, Farmer's Market's been very successful, um, it's down at the Mill Street Crossing. It's every Sunday, it's from ten AM to one PM, um, the vendors that are there are just loving it, they're, they're really, uh, can't believe how much they're doing, there's more to come, a lot of the vendors that are there, not every week, but might be a little sporadic, it's because they have previous commitments, they now are coming out of those, uh, commitments and are coming onboard to, um, the, uh, Farmer's Market down there, so it's every Sunday, it's incredible, it really is. Uh, there's all sorts of wonderful things there. And lastly, uh, on behalf of the Lions, I just wanted to remind you also about the concerts, that they're free concerts, they're every Sunday night, they begin at six o'clock, uh, just a great change and a great lineup has been added, and, uh, we already have a, uh, an arms-length list of, um, bands that want to come in next year. So, if you can get down there, it's a lot of fun, it's free, the Lions sponsor it, and you could also get some refreshments. Thank you, I just wanted to bring you up to date on some of those things, yes?
My motto is if it'll kill a tree, it'll kill me. Uh, what you said about the vinegar, salt, Dawn, it does work, it just doesn't last like Roundup does.
Mm-hmm.
That stuff gets into your groundwater, from the groundwater goes into the river, we're drinking that crap, and that's why half of Bristol got cancer, so.
So, yeah, that, thanks, yeah, that, and you know, like, the point that you, the, the point that you made is, you know, it's not, everybody thinks that one time you spray it and it's done, you just need to be, treat it and continue to do it, yes?
Michael, uh, all, I mean, you do so many positive things, and you are a cheerleader for the town and, and the things that are going. The only concern that I have, again, is when I see you being so positive about kind of like, uh, the way things look and, you know, it's kind of like the cute stuff, but as a councilman, are you going to be willing to ask quest, tough questions, and kind of address?
Not to take up time, but I do that now, and it's not about cute things, it's about having the pride and the, and the vision that where I live, I choose to live, that it continuously becomes a better place every day.
No, absolutely.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, anybody else on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Go to podium, state your name, please.
Hello, everyone, Stacy Dragon, New Brook Street. Uh, I'm here this evening, I had some parents reach out to me due to the involvement with Little League. They want programs, they want things to happen, they want additional things for kids, and I've had some requests for adult items. So, um, Mike Poploski has reached out to me, Aaron Antonelli has reached out to me, they want to get some parents to work together, they've outreach to other people, so we're looking for council support, I'm not standing in front of you looking for money, I'm looking for support. Um, our fall ball will start soon, which will be continuation of Little League, it's covered under Little League Insurance, we'll have those programs going. We had great success with the five and six-year-old kickball program, the kids loved it, they came back every week, we had people continuing to want to sign up, we did all of that for ten dollars a child, every child got a shirt, every child got a medal at the end, they had a wonderful time. With that program going on, I had adults coming in and going, what about an adult program? So, I know we did it as a pilot program at five and six, I would like the permission to make that a full-blown program, have an adult program and all-age children program, we would utilize the fields as they are, just like they would be used as a baseball game, but there would be kickball games going on with them. All of our volunteers that came out and, you know, watched with the kids, were all from the high school. They got their volunteer community service hours coming out and helping us, they were amazing, they were fantastic. The little kids look up to them, they relate to it, and it was wonderful, so we didn't have to pay for any kind of umpires. Um, Pops made it a lot of fun, he did math problems with them as they were running down the baselines, and it was wonderful. So, we'd like to extend that program, and we'd like to do all ages. Um, right now, we have the men's league going on, I don't know if everyone's familiar with that, it started out as the Puerto Rican league, they then changed it to the men's league as they opened it up and took on additional players. So, they start this evening, and they will go until, I believe, mid-September. So, they are there Monday, I think it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, so if you get a chance, go out, you'll see some great men's baseball, or softball, fantastic group of guys, um, so that is going on on the softball field. We also would like to get into coed softball for adults, one or two evenings a week, nothing drinking-related. We've had some requests for the baseball field in the back, um, because the fence is further, um, just to see if that can go on. So, there are the things we'd like to promote there. Then we had the soccer program come up, and while St. Mark's runs a phenomenal soccer program, very proud of everything they do, they made a decision that this upcoming year, that unless you are a member of St. and, I'm sorry, St. Mark's Church or the CCD, Bristol residents aren't going to be allowed to play in their soccer program any longer. So, parents were coming to me during the baseball season, and they want a soccer program. I have parents who are willing to run it, we just need permission to possibly share the Otter Street Field with St. Mark's to run that type of program. And just think about it. Um, we also had request, if you drive by those basketball courts, and I know you're talking about redoing them, and that's not what this is about, if you drive by those basketball courts, there's kids there every day, there's kids there every day, whether they're, they're just out there playing one-on-one, or there's adults, a lot of them, my son's age, he's eight, he's nineteen, excuse me, they go up to Edgely, the lights are on at Edgely till ten o'clock, they shut up, there's never any issues, they go out there, they have a great time. We would like to put together an organized outdoor basketball program. The kids will get a T-shirt, they would come out certain days a week, younger kids could have some training, you know, teach them how to dribble, teach them the fundamentals, kind of like we did indoors, but let's utilize that outdoor space, let's get those kids playing, and we're not saying we want to use it every night, because it is a public space, but we would love to do something organized to get these people active and out there. So, basically looking for your support to be able to use and utilize the baseball fields, eventually the basketball courts, all with council's permission, but we would like to get started with organizing the programs, getting kids signed up, getting the word out there.
Well, I'll give you my opinion, uh, the fields, we always made sure that your organization came first. You know, the school had their schedule, and it always worked great with the Little League and the school district, so that's not an issue, and using them in the fall, nobody uses them, so it would be nice to see people constantly, you know, occupying the field, so I don't think council has an issue with that.
And just on a side note, normally fall, we would take the kids to Levittown Continental. Ben Salem and Levittown United, which is formerly Levittown Pacific and Levittown American, have combined. Um, they came to us and they said, listen, it's nothing against Continental, but we're dumping all that money at Continental, why don't we run our own programs and utilize our own field? So, this will be the first year of running a fall program, where our kids will travel in the fall, they'll be in Bristol, they'll be at Ben Salem, and they'll be at Levittown Continental. So, it will be taking place on our fields.
So, to get back to the fields, the kickball and all that, the reason we moved soccer off to the big softball field is because the field was getting ruined, and then when baseball came.
Correct.
You know, it was all beat up. So I think if you're going to do a soccer program, again, it's just like working with the high school, as long as you can work that out with the Father Mooney and the CYO program, I have no problem, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself and I don't think council has a problem with any program that your organization is going to run. Is there any additional cost for like Leo to line the fields or do, is he?
Leo has, this past season for fall, he graded the fields for us. He made sure everything was taken care of in the borough, made sure that the grass was cut up until, you know, the point where it gets cold enough, it's not bothering. So he has taken care of all that for us all of last year. And even through our fall practices, he comes out and he'll do all that for us at no cost. So that's.
I know he does the soccer fields. So everything he's doing for you is pro bono. He's not charging for anything.
Right. The additional stuff he does not charge us for, correct? And if we run the program at the same time as St. Mark's, it's already included in that, in that grouping.
Mr. Cetrarchi.
I think the decision about the CYO soccer was not a decision made by St. Mark's. I just want to let people know that. This was an archdiocese of Philadelphia who put a directive out that only.
And that's how it's always been.
Church members will be involved with the CYO. So it's not like we had a local problem with doing that, but they have to abide by what the archdiocese says. And maybe we can work out something with this CYO program where it's no longer CYO if they want to meld it in to the borough.
Listen, the CYO is a phenomenal program. I'm not looking to touch that. I'm not, I'm not looking to take anything away from anyone. We just want to be able to offer it to children who don't qualify for that program.
But you know what, Stacy, gone back and Louis, I don't know how they were able to play because it was always CYO. You always had to either play, be a member of that parish or be in their CCD program. So I don't think it's anything new. I think it's being enforced maybe now through the archdiocese.
Yeah. When numbers started to drop, things got a little lax, I think is what happened. And now they're tightening up shit. So unfortunately, those children were told that, okay, that is the end and they're just looking for a place to play and I'm just coming to you as their voice, trying to organize something.
Does council have a problem with Stacy putting programs together and coming back to us?
Not at all. She always does such a good job.
Yeah, the other question I have is, and this has nothing to do with the programs, is that when the, when the fields are not in use with baseball, softball, whatever, can the community just have their own games there? Could they organize and play? Like if they want to play kickball and use one of the fields, would they be able to get together with other kids and?
Okay, absolutely. If it, remember back in the days where we would say, hey, we're going to get a pickup game? Okay. If you go out, and this, I'm only getting this from the legal information that I've gotten through doing this the past couple of years. If you go out and you're going to say, hey, we're going to go out and do a pickup game, you got it. There's no big deal. If you're going out as an organized group, no. Because if one of those people is injured, it falls back on council and the borough because you own the property. So it'll go through Mr. Dillon or one of the office staff. They'll send it over to me. Is there a problem with this date? We'll make sure they have their insurance in line and the proper minimums. Mr. Dillon will go over it, make sure all their minimums are correct. And then they'll approve or not approve them using the field for that particular purpose.
But to answer your question, anybody could go there and have a pickup game.
Yeah. So you will see people out there.
Yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure because what you're saying, it now makes sense, like when you organize it and you have it on their organizational order.
Yeah, we've had people come to us. They want to run a cornhole tournament for a benefit. And I kind of direct them here first to ask. And then I follow up with making sure that the insurance is in place and I get the copies to Mr. Dillon and have everything organized down.
That's a great idea. A great idea.
All right. So as long as it's running through you and your organization and people just, it's like a free-for-all, that's what we try to control.
It will be running through us. We will spearhead everything. I'm going to be honest with you, I know zero about soccer. So while I'll help get whatever they need to get, I will not have my hands in running that particular program because I don't know anything about it.
But it always was, the borough had their own soccer program years ago.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing is, can we not give everybody trophies? I know you want to, I know you want to.
We may, Little League itself makes a, I don't know how I want to say this. Our T-ball players, our four-year-olds and our five and six-year-olds, they get medals. For lack of a better term, they're our feeder leagues. So if those kids have a good time and they're happy and they're like, hey, look what I got, I did something spectacular, those are the kids that are going to feed our program and move on.
Right. No, I was only, I was only.
Yeah. And when they get to that seven and eight, they just want to be out there. They want to play. They want to play. So, yeah. So that's kind of how we handle it.
Good.
Thank you.
Contact Mr. Dillon and move forward.
If anybody needs any information on it, it's Bristol Borough Athletic Association is our website and also through the Little League Facebook page. You can pick up information there. And thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry. Can you just explain that if you want, or say it one more time about the CYO not allowing, or only allowing St. Mark's parish people, kids to be like?
Well, the CYO rule has always been for you to play CYO basketball, soccer, whatever sport you have, you have to be a member of that school or a member of their CCD program.
Or wasn't it years ago, I remember coaching CYO. St. Anne's didn't have enough kids. They were allowed to play for St. Mark's. Dave was the coach at the time.
Right. That's like the soccer. The soccer program was St. Anne's and St. Mark's.
But now that there's no St. Anne's, or is there still St. Anne's Parish?
Well, it's a parish worship site. But there's no kids, there's no more school.
Right. Now here, I got a little problem with this.
Go to the podium, Jeff.
I mean, first of all, as a resident, I got a problem.
So people can hear you.
As a resident, I have a problem. And then as a school board member, I have a problem. We allow St. Mark's to use our track. What about our kids? Are they allowed to play on that? Were, did you have high school kids?
Just direct it to me?
Well, I mean, you're.
I'm not just sitting here.
No, no, no. I'll talk to your dad. I'm sorry. I mean, I thought we were just having a discussion. I apologize.
Hold on. I said we're not going back and forth.
Yeah, right. I apologize.
The question you have is, what is the rule? And the rule from the archdiocese, from what I, and I could be wrong, you could go talk to Father Mooney, is that you have to be a member of the church.
Right.
Or a member of the CCD program to play, to participate in CYO. When St. Anne's and St. Mark's formed, they didn't have enough players. Basketball, they did. They didn't have enough players for soccer. The two churches conjoined, you had to be a member of either church or a member of either one of their CCD programs.
I understand.
Now that the school is closed, there's only one parish, one school. And if the archdiocese enforcing this rule, that means a borough kid, unless they're a member of that church or the CCD program, they can't play. So that's.
That's, you know, it's news to me as a board member and also as a resident. It's just, does, does the parish or does the, the archdiocese, do they know that we allow St. Mark's to use our facilities and it doesn't matter to them that they're shutting our kids out?
Probably not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I started Bristol Track Club. I think that is open to.
Trying not to, but if you want to go to the podium since we're on this.
I mean, I didn't mean to prolong this any longer, but.
I think it's, I'm allowing it because it's important to the people at home about their kids.
I, I was, I thought it was a little unfair to, you know, public schools using, letting the track being used, but just a small portion. So I started my own track program, which is open to the sixth, seventh and eighth graders of the borough school districts and also St. Mark's. So I can kind of keep the St. Mark's program and kids that couldn't do it.
Getting more involved also.
And we ended up getting about 90 kids on that Bristol Track Club team. That was, I bet you 25% was St. Markers and then the rest were sixth, seventh and eighth graders. And I think you're going to see a bit influx with that. So I'll help you out with some of that stuff.
And that's great. And I'm, you know, we're, guess what? We're, we try to help everybody out use our facilities and stuff. I was just shocked by this, you know, the archdiocese or St. Mark's coming up with this thing. It's just, I think.
Louis said, I don't think it's.
Not St. Mark's did it.
Your turn.
It's the archdiocese that did it. And they had, it's like anything else. They have the liability if people get hurt or something like that. And they had some issues at different places and, you know, where they had some troubles. So they figured, well, this is the way we're going to eliminate it. We're just going to have it. But it hurts us because we're so small and we get, everybody gets along. Like Angelo said, he's got a team that's, three-quarters of the team is public school, quarter of it's.
The school board member?
And it's.
The whole school board, we're thrilled to allow, we allow everybody to use whatever we can, you know, time. We don't have that much to offer, but what we do, we do, you know? We have to take care of the school teams too. But this is pretty depressing. I mean, I'm kind of shocked that this is going on here.
I don't think it's a new rule. I don't need, I don't know how these kids, I mean, it's like Little League. You got kids from the township playing in the borough, which never was allowed before. But, you know, we could waste.
You're right. But if one town doesn't offer and you're closed, you're allowed, just like CYO, where I remember playing for St. Mark's because St. Anne's didn't have a, a team for that age bracket, so.
And they were allowed to play there.
Right. Right.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Back on this side of the room. Anybody else want to speak? Go to the podium.
Good evening. Ken Bexler, Reese Ward. Just the time restriction that you implemented last month, is that lifted?
I think that some of these things that Mr. Poliavka had was very constructive to what's going on and we allowed the time to go. But if you have something that's important to us, we'll keep you going as long as you want.
Okay. Thanks. Just one, one thing that I wasn't going to touch on, when Mr. Poliavka was up here the first time, you talked about, both of you were talking about that when the rent's paid off in 2025, that $660,000 that's in debt service will go back to the taxpayers that you can't move that into the general fund.
Correct.
I hate to contradict you on that, but you had a pretty, pretty strong discussion with former Councilman Lutz. Do you recall this discussion on this issue? On the previous road construction loan that was paid off in '08, '08, '09? That money did not, did go to, from debt service to the general fund. Do you remember having that discussion with Mr. Lutz?
You have, if you look at a borough budget, every, there's a general fund, there's street lighting, there's debt service, there's recreation.
Yeah, I know, there's a whole pie.
When you collect that tax money, it only could be used for that fund.
That's not, I was at that meeting. I remember it distinctively.
I, I'm not disagreeing with you, Mr. Bexler, but by, you can't transfer money to another fund.
Well, you did say that at that meeting to Mr. Lutz. I remember because he asked you, where'd the money go? How come it didn't go back to the taxpayers? And you said it went.
Well, there had to be, then there had to be debt service.
It was debt service, money was, the loan was paid off, the previous road construction.
Can't take debt service and move it to another fund. There's millage for each account.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and argue.
No, I'm not going to argue either, but I know, I was at the meeting. I remember.
Well, then you're right.
I can, I can, I can produce the film.
That's fine. You're right.
When you said it.
That's fine.
All right. But anyhow, like I said, I wasn't even going to touch on that, but I had to because you brought it up tonight and Mr. Poliavka. Anyhow, I just wanted to say to you and to council, you know, since I haven't come to the council meetings, you cannot accuse me of ever being disrespectful to you, any member of council, to the mayor, to the manager, to the solicitor.
Totally agree.
Thank you. Appreciate that. But last month, I, you know, and I, and this is, and I'll be done. But last month, we talked, you talked about, I asked you last month, why does the borough continue to hire people without advertising jobs? And you said, in your opinion, the borough doesn't have to advertise part-time jobs. That's what you said. I turned to the solicitor and asked the solicitor if that was correct. The solicitor chose not to answer the question. I don't know if he was being spiteful to me or he just didn't know the answer to the But anyhow, my, my point is, or furthermore, you know, why, why wouldn't the borough advertise a 30-hour-a-week permanent job funded by the taxpayers? Why wouldn't they?
I, I have no idea.
Oh, why?
Nope.
Okay. All right.
I think what I said to you was, when we discussed this person in executive session, Mr. Gerard said to me, I didn't think we had to vote on hiring a part-time employee. So I think if you go back to the tapes that you referred to, I think that's what I said. But I'm not going to sit here going back and forth. We hired somebody and council voted on it.
That's all. I just wanted to make that point. I just don't see what's the difference if it's still a permanent position, not a temporary position, 30 hours a week, you know, taxpayer funded.
I said at last month's meeting, we're going to advertise for all positions.
I'm glad.
And that's, they're, Sally and Mr. Dillon's been working on an ad to run. We're just trying to get qualifications and experience and everything in there. So.
That's it.
That's all you have?
That's it.
Mr. Gerard.
Yeah. When I asked that question, I asked that question because when the previous inspector came, came back as a part-timer, I, I raised that question. I said, do, do we need to vote on this? And I was told in the back that, no, that's up to Mr. Dillon's discretion. So then when it was put on table where council had to vote on the next building inspector, I said, I thought, I thought we didn't have to vote on it. It was up to Mr. So it was just a question I was asking.
I agree. I'm not saying, Dave, I'm not saying you did anything wrong. What I'm saying is, I agreed with you. I didn't think we needed to vote on it either. But I said, let's vote on it so nobody's going to complain.
Yeah, but I was just going from information that was presented. I don't know the answer.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, I just want, I mean, for Dave, I think what Dave may have misconstrued of him saying he didn't have to hire for part-time is that when, when he was talking about, what Mr. Dillon was talking about, what he wouldn't have to hire for was something that was urgent. You know what I mean? Like that's what he wouldn't have to hire for. You know what I mean? To me, part-time, full-time, any positions, you need to be transparent. To me, part-time, full-time, any positions, you need to be transparent, you have to have, you know, you should have the, you know, that policy in place, the hiring policy. And on top of that, that last meeting, and, I mean, kind of the reason why it got, it's so crazy is that you know that when you read on your agenda that you're going to hire a part-time code enforcement officer, and as a council member, you've never talked about it, you've never heard it, and you're in the back room and you're asking, now, I asked in the back room, do we have a name that we're going to be hiring? Oh, we're not going to answer that, we got to go out into the, onto the floor and answer it. So what that tells me is that, before they hired, they had somebody in mind who they hired, of course, was the person that they hired. And that means that the other council members that hired her, they had a talk amongst each other at some point, that this is who we're going to hire, because that name never came up, I've never heard it, I don't think anybody else on council heard it on the floor or in executive session, but that name came up. And that is the problem that I have, is that it was basically rewarding somebody for being unprofessional at a, you know, at a, at an election site. So that person was, was hired as a favor because she was willing to go the extra mile and attack somebody personally. And that's just how I feel about it.
Well noted. Any other comments on this side of the room? We're all done with follow-up participation? Follow-up participation, Mr. Mayor, what do you have?
Uh, you want to go to the police chief first, or you want me?
Thank you. We didn't get to you yet.
According to Bucks County Police Communications, they reported we had 1,239 incidents for the month of July. We executed 113 traffic stops. Some of you are aware of it, I know some council members are actually present, we had a railroad track rescued. Officer Webb and several other officers, including myself, were actually up there. Richie did a good job and was able to get to the lady in time. I bring that up more than anything is because, again, especially to our youth, the, that was the first time I was ever on the tracks when an Exela went by, and it's a life-changing experience when it comes to respect to trains. Because the, how that could suck you onto that track, being 20 yards away, is quite impressive. So I just really hope our, our residents and our youth, don't be stupid. We had the resignation of Officer Harris, he came out number one, the yardly borough full-time police officer, he's being hired this week, will be doing the interview process with the mayor, searching for a replacement. Yesterday, because of national events, I was invited to take part in an FBI emergency conference call regarding the incidents in El Paso and Dayton, Ohio. If anybody saw the issue, would happen in Tully Town and Temple University, the most important thing is if you see something, say something. We really need that, and that's the only, we're not the answer, but we're certainly going to try to prevent as much as we can, and the only way we're going to prevent these things is if we are proactive. The public's got to be proactive so we can be proactive. On a positive note, we went over to the 21st Century Summer Camp on the 21st, met with the schoolchildren over there, brought all our police cars over, the kids got to go through them, we also had Jimmy the Iceman came over, and it was nice enough to give out to kids Italian, actually had a good time with that. And tomorrow night is National Night Out Against Crime, it's a large resource operation, and it's tough when you have a small police department in a small town. And I had talked to some people, and even the council president introduced me to Mr. DeCaro. Pat and Ernie DeCaro have graciously volunteered or, or hosting the first Bristol Borough Police Night at the carnival. And with the St. Anne's carnival coming up, Bristol Environmental is going to be putting forward, footing the bill for 300 kids in the borough to have their little private time, we have an opening on four o'clock on the 20th of August. We'll be giving out the tickets to the kids over at 21st Century, but we'll also, come Thursday, we're going to have additional tickets, we'll have an additional 100 tickets, we'll put the information on the police Facebook page and our Crime Watch page. And as long as you're 12 years old and under, stop by headquarters, let us know with some type of proof of residency, and we're going to be able to provide fun food, little giveaways, again, thanks to the people at Bristol Environmental, it was a great move, and we really appreciate that. And it's, you know, it's our ability for the police to have some time to interact with the kids in a positive situation. And we thought that was important at the 21st Century, and we just really appreciate that that.
And we're talking to the Art Rages program too, right?
Yes, they're included.
They're included.
I'm waiting for, I got a contact for them today, so they'll be also involved.
So, the chief wanted to do something about, you know, this national day, and if the carnival starts the 19th, and, you know, introduced him, like the chief said, a personal friend of mine, and him and his brother decided to fund this entire project. So kids that don't get the opportunity, that could come there and spend $16 for a wristband, are going to be able to enjoy the carnival starting two hours earlier. They're going to have free food for them, pizzas, hot dogs, soda, and Ernie also can get ice cream for all the kids. So they're going to have a nice time, it's going to be a fun night, and paid 100% by Bristol Environmental, and the church benefits also, so it's a, it's a great night, and like the chief said, they get a chance to interact with the entire police department and the mayor, so hopefully it's one of many.
Thanks again, we appreciate it, that's it.
Okay, any questions for the chief? Tony?
Yeah, the only issue, I'll speak to you in private, just that, you know, with kids moving in certain areas.
Mr. Rick, yeah?
A while back, did you mention something about having automated license plate readers?
We were granted a, we were awarded by the county, when they go on ALPR, an automatic license plate reader. Wait. I just require comment, comment not on that, but something else, I was at a town last week, and Sergeant Moores was in charge of the police department, and one of the things that since I've been here is that we really push is our responsiveness to issues, is we try to get on it right away, and sometimes they're minor, sometimes they're majors. And there was a couple of things that came up during the week, and some were minor and some were major, and I just wanted to thank him publicly for his leadership in getting things done, I think we, he did a good job for the borough, as he always does, but I just wanted to recognize him for that.
Any other questions for the chief? Mayor?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things. I want to thank the chief for all the work that he did in putting together, you know, this program with Pat and Ernie DeCaro. It's, it's a great thing for these, for the children, 300 children in the town, to be able to go to the fair and enjoy all the night rides and food and so forth. I was over at the summer program the other day, also too, you know, when, I get a little riled when people say that there's nothing down for the kids to do, there's 200 kids over at the summer program. And that summer program, you'd have to go over and see it, it's just amazing, plus another 35 kids, 35 or 40 kids that are involved in the Art Rages program, they're going to put a play on Aladdin, they made their own costumes, they, they have a dance group. It's going to, I think they're, tomorrow, oh no, Wednesday at 10:30 at Snyder Girardi, they're going to put the performance on. But these kids are, are having a ball, they're, I mean, there are 20 different programs, along with physical fitness, that they're involved in, so, you know, between the softball and the baseball and the summer program that the borough participates in, along with the 21st Century, I think it's, you get a chance, stop in and see the play. Relative to the fire department, Herbie had to leave because he had another meeting, but the, the fire that we had at the villas the other night, I just want to commend the fire department on the excellent job that they did. A lot of people don't realize that, you know, the, up at the villas, those houses are what they call quads, four of them, connected. They made one heck of a stop in holding that fire to one building. I mean, it was a lightning strike that just about blew out the, the second floor dormer, and they did an excellent job. I want to thank all the fire companies from Bristol Township and other surrounding communities that also responded to that. And the only other thing I want to say too, First Friday was great, great, I mean, I think it was the biggest crowd we've had yet. So, got two more to go, and that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Rick, yeah?
Do you want to mention about the movie?
Oh, thank you. The movie night was canceled because of the heat, the 21st Century, it'll be this, Friday, August the 9th, at the Borough Wharf, starts about seven o'clock, the movie is Peanuts, it's free, we'll have snacks, and starts at seven o'clock, show up, it's a free movie, generally get about 400 or 500 families, or total people, so, thank you, Bill, for reminding me that.
Mr. Rick, yeah?
Thank you, um, the only thing I have is some vehicle-related things, abandoned cars throughout town, things like that, I sent on some to Mr. Dillon, and I, I spoke about before about the boat, somebody had dumped the boat off over on Climber and Buckley Street, I'll send it to Mr. Dillon, that's all I have.
Now, if he's, excuse me, if he's not in tomorrow, why don't you just send it to the chief?
Okay.
All right? Mr. Catroche?
Okay, on Wednesday, July 31st, the Walk Works Committee had a public presentation of the development of the active transportation plan to improve the mobility, safety, and health of our residents as they walk, run, bike, and roll through the borough to local destinations and regional resources. Ken Baird and Liz Rosenkrantz of Gilmore Associates, associates, made the presentation to the public. Also in attendance were representatives from the Bucks County Planning Commission, PennDOT, the Heritage Conservancy, and the East Coast Greenway Alliance. Ken and Liz also had a table set up at First Friday to present the plan to the public and had an interactive map and a survey that was very successful. I thank them for all their efforts, and I would also like to thank the representatives from the county, PennDOT, the Heritage Conservancy, and the ECGA for their attendance at the committee meetings, and also Amanda was there at a couple of meetings and was very helpful. I'd like to also thank Mayor Saxon, Chief Henry, and Sergeant Moores and Mr. Dillon for their quick attention to the problem with tractor trailers coming down Washington Street and trying to turn on the Radcliffe Street. They've caused damage to the curves and sidewalks of two of the residences. Fred Baumgartner from the Grundy Commons offered his help in controlling the truck traffic leaving his facility. He met with the, his tenants along with Sergeant Moores, and they're developing a plan to, to ensure, to ensure that the truckers have the correct routes when they leave their building. Sergeant Moores also took the initiative to meet with some of the tenants at the former Simon and Schuster building to address some trucking problems there, so I think, I think this is a very good effort. I don't think these truck drivers are doing it on purpose, I think something got changed in Google or MapQuest, and it's sending them down these side streets, but, but thanks to the chief and Sergeant Moores for addressing that. Thank you.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes, thank you. If I might ask for some help from you, Mr. President and, and Mr. Winslow, if I could. A couple of months ago, I talked about the Jefferson Avenue Bridge on the Ballfield side, there's sidewalks that are cracked and really bad underneath there, I don't know if, if Mr. Dillon had any luck with Amtrak, I know you're pretty good with Amtrak here, Merle. It's a lot of foot traffic under there, I'd like to see that sidewalk repaired if you could. And also, as you know, I've been talking about that lot behind Buckley Street there, behind the school, Mr. Dillon can't seem to get a handle on who owns that. Mr. President, I, I would like you to treat that like a bank-owned property, you know, how we'll come in and our guys will cut the grass when it, when it, when it gets, and we'll send, we'll send the people a bill. I've been asking about six months now to clean up that alleyway behind CBM, behind Grundy Towers, it looks nice. I go down that alley almost on a daily basis, and I can't stand that construction debris, branches, and, and, you know, I'd like to see that cleaned up, okay, if that's possible, please. With your permission, I would also like to say something about last, last month's comments, what we talked about, if I could. And the first thing was the Robert's Rule of Order, and I agree with that. It will make the, the meetings go smoother and be more professional, however, it will only work if the person running the meeting is fair to the people who agree with them, and they share that same sense of fairness to those that question them or disagree with them. The second thing that was brought up was volunteerism, there's no problem there. Volunteerism is a positive, and Bristol can only move forward when people step up. Now, the third one is tricky, civility was brought up, and I, I don't want to hash old history, but, but there's some wounds that have yet to be healed, and I promise, I will not mention any names. I, I, I debated whether even to get into this, because we're all in a positive role, and like I said, I like the Robert's Rule of Order. But I'm going to bring some of this stuff up in the hopes that, that it doesn't, it doesn't happen again, okay? Because people's feelings get hurt, and, and some, some, some stuff that went on that, that I just didn't like. And since people got up to talk about civility and they want civility, I'm going to talk about some stuff, and I promise not to use anybody's names, but I want Bristol to know some of the past history and why some people are, are doing what they do, okay, so, here we go, all right, please bear with me. You know, being on council sometimes reminds me of being back in grade school or high school. You always have that one or two troublemakers who by their nature just got a start. Steal your pen, give you that unwanted shove, and what happens when you react? That's when the teacher turns around and you get the lecture, for trying to retrieve your property or trying to land that leave me alone punch. Like I said, I won't mention anybody's names or civility, but here are some examples of what I'm talking about over the past years. I have seen a councilperson publicly be called an idiot and a moron. That councilperson's crime was a difference of opinion and a different way to spend taxpayers' money. And I ask you, would you call that civility? And the reason I'm talking about this, I don't want this to happen anymore, okay, just like everybody wants it to run smooth, so I'll bring up these few things that really ticked me off, and that would be the end, hopefully it doesn't happen again. Another thing, my friend, he went to run as a councilperson, their name was soiled in the Courier-Times. They were taken to court by the committee to secure Bristol's future, they had to get a lawyer. And when the committee failed to have them disqualified, outside of the courtroom, in the hallway, there was a bumping incident. My friend was called a liar, a perjurer, and cursed at with a Courier-Times reporter witnessing the whole event. It did not make a paper. Their crime, being on the wrong team, and all he was trying to do was do his civic duty. I attended a school board meeting at the old senior building in Hannah, had a Courier-Times article about Pensbury doing a $13 million project for $110,000 in permit fees. Since the new school was projected to cost $39 million, I asked the question, rightly or wrongly, why are building permit fees for $458,000 when, when another township fees for, for doing a $13 million project was $110,000? Why can we not do the $39 million project for three times 110, which is $330,000, and not 458? That was my question. The councilperson was in the audience, he stood up and told the school board that I was a troublemaker. And get this, I needed to be taken out back and taught a lesson. My crime, speaking at a public, public meeting, again, I ask you, was that civil? During the May primary, one of the nicest people I know was publicly accused of parental neglect. Their crime, I don't know, wrong team, their last name, wearing the wrong t-shirt, would you call that civil? There's always going to be two sides to the story, and sometimes the person who starts it doesn't get caught, and the person who reacts, they get the lecture. And for those Bristolians who did not get the memo, spouses and children are off limits. Thank you, and hopefully I never have to repeat that again.
So, basically, I allowed you to continue this because you didn't use names, and it doesn't retain the what's going on, so I'm glad you got that off your chest, and we can move forward.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Mr. Devine?
I'm looking forward to the Rules of Order and a positive for Bristol, thank you.
The, the one thing I have, I was hoping Mr. Dillon was here, but do we need to vote on having our borough workers cutting that grass at Gordon Street along the, along the fence line? I mean, for as much as we want Bristol to look great, especially with the baseball fields, you have so many people coming down to the fields, and there's an area even back there that is, is pretty. there that is pretty terrible to look at with overgrown vegetation and all kinds of stuff popping out there. So there are some people on Gordon Street that cut their own property, and I know Dave on his own went out and cut some people's properties, you know what I mean, which is great, but, you know, that can only last so long. How many times, you know, you're going to have Dave Durrell go out there and cut that part of Gordon Street? But there are also a lot of older people, people that are in great health, that really don't have the ability to go out and cut that property. And to me, I don't believe that it should be theirs anyway. That fence went up, Septon did it, they never finished the other side, never did anything else. So we got a fence up there that was under the guise of, you know, national security or, you know, terrorism or whatever it was, but I guess maybe they ran out of money, so it's no longer, you know, for that reason. So now we have a fence along Gordon Street that people have to look at that's overgrown. I just don't understand, why can't our borough workers just go there and cut that grass? They already cut all the fields at Memorial Field.
That's not our property. That's the problem, Tony.
Well, it's not our property, but we cut the front of it at Septon. Our borough workers take care of the front.
Not to, not to make this a political issue, but Mr. Pizzola, when he won the May election and didn't know you were going to run as an independent, contacted, and he has some friends politically because he's been around a long time, he made some contacts state and with some state and federal people to try to get that fence removed and to get the grass cut. So he's working on something, and he said, whether he wins or loses, he's going to try to follow through with that. Whether he's, has a shot at that or not, I don't know, but he took the initiative as a council-elect to try to meet with the right agencies to get that done. So let's, you know, see where we're going with this.
So the question is, why?
Can the Borough cut it? I don't think so.
Why, why do we cut the front of the property, of the Septon property or the Amtrak property?
I don't know. You gotta talk to Mr. Dillon.
I mean, I'm sure.
I will call him tomorrow.
All right. Well, just so you know, Ralph, I'm not being disrespectful, but of course.
No, I don't know. I can't answer that.
But you are aware they do cut that property?
No, I'm not.
The question with the chief I talked about, I mean, I'll talk to you in person, and then the issue with the courts on Buckley Street, I've also talked with, you know, I'm excited to be able to do something along the lines of, you know, with recreation, things for these kids to do. Because I do believe that as we get older, we forget how we were when we were young, when we were young teenagers, right? We start to think like, you know, I mean, I think about, I mean, we used to play football on the street, I mean, and tackle people on our street, into cars of our neighbors, and, I mean, that was one of our games. And we couldn't understand why Mr. Torres would come out screaming and yelling and, you know. But now that you're older, you start to see, all right, well, kids need stuff to do. And I, and to me, it's exciting just to hear, you know, the kind of ideas that people, you know, in the public have come up with, and that we're considering them, we're talking about them, which is, you know, which is important. The last thing that I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about is, listen, I've never had a problem following rules. The only problem that I ever had, and it's been this way since forever, it's just who you are, and for me, I don't follow rules that don't pertain to everyone. When rules are only kind of targeted for me, you know, I'm not going to accept that. So, you know, at the latest meeting that people got upset, yes, I mean, or the meeting before when I went nuts at the podium, I did. I went absolutely berserk. And the reason why is because it had nothing to do with politics. It was personal. It was a personal attack on somebody close to me. So those are, I'm not making excuses. I accept my behavior. I was out of control. There's no doubt about it. I was. But it was to the point where people also got to understand, you are emotional beings. I am, I've been here for eight years. Believe, I could have went crazy a lot of times that I never did, because I understand it's political. I'm not going to get upset. I'm never going to attack anybody personally. Politically, yes, I will, and I'll continue to do it. I don't feel bad about it. And what I'm most disappointed of is that the rest of council accepts this lame kind of hypocritical way to put in Roberts rules. And I have no problem. I will embrace the rules. And I'm going to read some of the things, why it didn't even happen, the first time they were out, the first meeting when they were ready, okay? So Ralph, whoever's ghostwriter was that wrote it, they put out a bunch of things, and they were all, the funny thing is, they were all targeted to me, individually targeted to me. We had a council member that was out of control. We had a council member who's disrespectful. We had a ca, just say it's Tony. Tony went crazy for one meeting, but when I look back, and I'm glad Mr. Girard read that, because there are things that they do on a daily basis. So I'm going to read these, and I'm going to add them to the record for when we, for our meeting minutes, so, because we're going to have both meetings today. But I'm going to read them now, and then I'm just going to add that when we have questions or comments for our meeting minutes. I want them to be adjusted. All right, so the new rules developed were, you know, they were likely, I read them, there were nine discrepancies for the violations. I'm going to read them. No "alls," just listen, this is, this is both ways, okay? I know people don't like to hear things about.
Tony, read the rules, Tony.
That's what I'm trying, listen.
Don't worry about the public.
No, I like to.
And I'm allowing you to continue, so read the rules.
All right. Ralph, another thing. Ready? This is my time to talk. I'm not, I'm not public participation. You don't need to be, I could stay here for an hour.
I'm not, I'm saying, I'm allowing this.
No, you're telling me to go on. I'm going to get there. That's all, I mean, simple. All right. The first thing is, there was no agenda for the meeting. So if you're going to follow Roberts rules, the first thing you have to have is an agenda for the public to have, you know, and then to get upset at a person in the public trying to ask about an agenda, and, you know, it was ridiculous. That's the first thing. The second thing, at three, at 31 minutes and 39 seconds, either Lorraine or Betty calls out, "cheat and slag." There was no gavel, there was nothing struck, nobody said anything. At 32 minutes and 16 seconds, Ralph stops Kenny Bixler and tells him, "You're done." See, that's not civility. That's a person in the public that's asking questions. Thank you for, you know, thank you for your comments, then you can sit down. Not telling somebody, "You're done." See, because he doesn't do that to the people who support him. He only does it to the people who he feel that don't support him, and really, you're not going to find a more, you know, Kenny Bixler is as straight in the road and, you know, professional and respectful as they come. So that was number three. Then number four, at 32 minutes and 59 seconds, Ralph said, "I'm not having you ask anyone questions." Again, for me. It's okay for other people to ask questions, but not me. At 33, at 56:06 of the meeting, Louis is explaining how his mother-in-law, and Ralph follows the gavel for me because I was trying to talk to Louis and let him understand the feelings that I had personally, how I felt when it's a personal issue. And I was just simply asking a question, and then the gavel, I get hit with it, okay? And then at 1 hour and 20 minutes and 50 seconds, Betty speaks directly to Mr. Dillon. We're no longer doing that. Everything needs to go through the president, which did not go, but no gavel was hit. Okay? Then at 1:21 and 21 seconds, Ralph sends Mr. Pezza to the podium because he had his hand raised in the audience. Ralph brings him up. Public participation was over. The meeting was never canceled, I mean, was never adjourned. Mr. Pezza goes up and speaks about civility and everything else, and the reason I have a problem with this is because all these things are happening, they coincide with Ralph not doing what he should do and using our trash as our trash company as his own personal service. And the people like Bill Pezza, Michael Gorman, and the majority of council, they never say anything. See, and what they have to realize is that when you have, when you have Mr. De Giuseppe, who is the leader, is the face of, you know, Bristol Borough, which he is, okay? When you don't stop them from doing it, it continues to grow and it becomes more obnoxious. When you have good people that can make a dent, because guess what? Ralph doesn't care about how it looks to him. He don't care. But he doesn't understand that Bill Pezza cares that it looks, that's why he won't answer any questions, he'll come up here. Michael Gorman cares how it looks, so he'll come up here, he won't answer any questions. The key is this, ask questions. Good people, good government, you ask questions. You don't get stonewalled every time you have a question, anytime that you want to know more information, right? So these are the things that are happening. At 1:26, Betty yells out, "Are we hiring part-time pops too?" No gavel. Just yell it out, "Are we hiring part-time?" No gavel. And then the last one, at 1:37:33, Louis asks Bill Salerno directly, "Is that a state law?" No gavel, no redirection, nothing. Alls I'm saying is this, anything that has to do with me, I'm a teacher. So one skill that I have as a teacher is that there are kids that get on my nerves, right? But guess what I have to do as a teacher? I got to treat all of them fairly, whether they get on my nerves or not, because that's my job, and that's Ralph's job as council president. As much as I get on his nerves, I might ask questions that he doesn't like. I may say things that he wants to not hear people talk about. And when you have the majority that goes along with it, it is like a high school or middle school clique where they just, they're voting in blocks. They don't care what's right or wrong. They vote the way their leader wants them to vote. And that's, we blank period exactly what's happening here. So for all the people out there that are disgusted with me or feel like I'm, you know, some bad guy that just wants to ask questions, am I a little abrupt? Am I little, yes, I am. But I also understand, I'm not going to sit here and play games while everyone else has to, gets to do it on a different set of rules. And basically, that's it. So these are going to be the nine things that I would like to, you know, when we get to voting on the meeting minutes, I would like to update them and put them into, into the record. That's all.
I just wanted to thank George and the crew and Mr. Dillon. We have a really well-oiled machine going on here. Everything I've asked for this month, and this is from people that called me and said, "My light's out at night out in front of my house, the light's on during the day, the light's blinking," or whatever. I contacted Mr. Dillon. The next day, it was finished. It was done. And I'm just really proud of the way our Borough Crew takes control of things and finishes things right away. And that's all I have.
All right. I need to appoint a committee to deal with grievances, and I could fill council in. Matter of fact, I will fill you in before we leave an executive session. So I'm going to, I have to appoint a three-member committee, so I was going to appoint Mrs. Collins, Mr. Catroci, since he's already involved in the negotiations, and myself to deal with grievances. We never had this committee since I've been here, but by Borough Code, we have to appoint The other thing is, we're going to need a motion to suspend the rules to vote on items one, three. You guys got to pen the marquees so I can make motions. One, three, four, five, and seven. We will not be voting on two and six. Do you understand that? So can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second by Mr. Rickio. Any questions or comments? All right, so will somebody make a motion for number one?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, I mean, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the council minutes 7, 8, 19, for the treasurer's report for June 2019, for the police and DJs report, June and July 2019, inspection department report for July 2019, public works department report for 2019, fire chief report for June and July 2019, and the harbor report for 6/2419 and 7/2919.
Second by Mr. Rickio. Any questions or comments? Mr. Devine.
Yes, just a comment. I just want the nine discrepancies that I talked about with your rule, updated Roberts rules, to be added to the record for.
That works, Mr. Devine, so.
Back and go, back and go this month's minutes, but can't be a correction of last month's.
Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All right.
Number three.
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize a resolution for a Department of Community and Economic Development multimodal transportation fund grant of $730,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for Mill Street and Radcliffe Street traffic improvements.
I have a second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine.
Yeah, I was reading over these, and whoever was made out to was left blank, name and title, was left blank on these. I didn't know who would, who goes in there, who we put on those.
What is it? Is it the application?
Yes, the revolution.
You want to ask?
I don't know. Do you have it?
Yes.
It's Bristol Borough.
It could be the Borough, right, Carl?
It says the name that I was talking about at the top here.
Yeah.
It's probably going to be Jim Dillon would be filled in because that would be who would sign on behalf of the Borough.
Do you want to amend the motion that says that that's going to be the Borough Manager?
I would like to amend the motion, and the Borough Manager will be signing it.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to authorize a resolution for the Department of Community and Economic Development Multimodal Transportation Fund of $979,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority for Old Route 13 and Otter Street realignment.
I have a second.
Put in there, just add it.
And that'll be, the designated person will be Mr. Dillon, Borough Manager.
I have a second. Second by Mr. Rickio. Questions or comments? Mr. Devine.
Yes, with, this, this realignment of Otter Street, is that the area, like, if we're coming down past the recycling center, we do take that little right, there's that light there, where you kind of got to slow in, what would it do? Just bring that street together? We'd get rid of?
So I'll just give a real quick background on this. This kind of came as an idea inadvertently. You know, this, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. The bridge that's on Old Route 13 needs some repair work, and some cost estimates that come in is around $800,000. So we've been working with Conrail to try to explain to them that it's their bridge, and they tried to tell us that it's the Borough and the Township's bridge. So instead of battling with them, concept of taking Old Route 13, if you're driving out of town, and bending it into Otter Street, right past the Otter Creek Recycling Property, it would eliminate a road over top of that old bridge, and it would actually make a nice T-intersection with Otter Street, because right now, Old Route 13 comes in on that difficult skewer.
Yeah.
It's a driveway from Dow. There's a lot going on there. This would actually clean up that whole corridor and remove the vehicles from that bridge, which means PennDOT doesn't inspect it, which means we don't have to cost-share or convince Conrail that it's their cost to maintain that bridge. The other angle to this is, we've been trying to get Conrail to pull up those tracks. They don't use them anymore. We finally, for the very first time, got them to admit that in writing. So instead of litigating this issue and trying to prove who owns this bridge or not, If the track can get pulled up, it would make way for the long-planned trail that was to run down that corridor. The trail is also being pursued by Heritage Conservancy. They're trying to connect the marsh to Croydon Woods, and that trail alignment would also correlate to the East Coast Greenway Trail, which goes from Maine to Florida. So, there's a lot of stakeholders in on this thing. In fact, late to the game, Heritage Conservancy even pledged money towards this joint application with Borough and Township. $12,000, it's a small nominal amount, but, you know, it shows that they got skin in the game, they're, they're stepping up to the plate, too. So, it's a pretty exciting project. It'll straighten out the intersection, and it'll make room for that trail.
Got you. Thanks, Kirk.
Are we doing away with that bridge? Is that what the plan is?
The bridge would remain there.
Bridge is going to go before?
It would just, that's correct, the, the, the vehicles would tee into Otter Street, but the bridge would remain there, just make a nice corridor for the trail.
Okay, so it's going to be like abandoned for vehicles?
Right.
Thank you.
And the Borough owns that property next to the old Otter Recycling, so it's not like we have to?
We would have to work with the property owner to see if we could get, the Otter Street recycling property kind of goes to a point.
Okay, but most of it's the Borough's on that point there?
I think it's, the title's kind of odd, yeah, but there would have to be at least some negotiations on that.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number 5.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a resolution to implement health in all policies for the Walk Works grant.
Second by Mr. Gerard. Second, questions or comments? Mr. Gerard.
Yes, Kirk. Great, great, you know what I mean? As a bicycle rider, I like, I like all these ideas. Do not forget to put access area in for the kayakers and the canoeers who want to get their exercise that way.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number 7.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize advertisement for proposed ordinance amending the wireless ordinance as proposed by the Cohen Law Office.
My second. Second by Mr. Catroci. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Before we adjourn, I just want to go over a couple of quick things. Don't forget that St. Anne, St. Mark Carnival, it starts August 19th and runs through Saturday, August 24th. And a couple other things, you know, for the public and council, there's a lot of moving parts every day that takes place in this borough with different functions of different organizations, and meeting with different groups, and trying to get grants, and bridges that are out and working with. So, I know a lot of, you show up at meetings, but all the stuff in these packets, we're working on every day to get to you. So, it's just not a two-hour meeting that, you know, we show up at and try to get it done. And the last thing I like to say is, I know we talked about kids, there's nothing to do, but if you really look at what's going on in town, and maybe that's why, Jeff, we don't see them, because there's so many things that I'm hearing, the, the chief's, the 180 kids in the one program chief, and you got the other program, you got baseball going on. So, there, when we say there's nothing for kids, I think we're, we're not really correct on what we're talking about. There are a lot of things for kids to do in this town, so I just want to make that clear. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
By Lorraine, second by Mr. Gerard.